So if you're looking at a lot of the roots to where our founders were getting information in terms of designing our government.
Really wrong.
That was a nugget.
Really wrong.
Commissioner's office is requesting a board of proof and I see the minutes for the meeting on August 28th, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Correa?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Piddle? Commissioner's office is requesting the board of proof and I see the minutes for the meeting on September 1st, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Correa?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle? Commissioner's office is requesting the board of proof and I see the minutes for the meeting on September 3rd, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board of proof and I see the minutes for the meeting on September 15th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
May I get a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle?
Aye.
I'm staying. Wait, financials have moved way down?
Oh, yeah.
Way down. Heidi needs more time.
Yeah.
Heidi likes saying that.
Heidi likes it.
She wants to sit there long.
You are throwing me off, Heidi.
Are we ready? Are we still signing?
Oh, yeah, we're ready.
Well, first, thanks a lot for getting on the agenda. I know we kind of got in there at the end, so we really appreciate you making room for us. What we're asking today is approval to enter into contract with Millstone Management Group to do some work at our adult facilities building. Some trim work, and we have an entryway. They've been deteriorating for several years. They've been on the to-do project. We were going to take the trim off, but we found out when we did a sample board that there's unfinished brick on there. Actually, it's like a block, so we've got to cover it up. We're getting some seepage in there and getting water to the block. It's kind of doing some damage on the inside. Also, the entryway, that's original to the building. It's about 25 years old. It's falling apart, basically. We've had some issues. Also, it's something like lowering our doors. I don't know if it's because of the weather over the last couple of years, but we've had some heaving and stuff like that, so we've had some safety issues. So that's what this project is, is to do that entryway and trim work.
The Board of Developmental Disabilities is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreed between the Judd County Board of Commissioners, Judd County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and Millstone Management Group Incorporated to perform all services necessary for the Metamob Center and Adult Services Building and exterior trim work projects in an amount not to exceed $46,490.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Piddle?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle? Uh, yeah, you see this?
Yeah.
Do we have to vote or something?
Yes.
Thank you.
Screw me with the...
Not yet.
You're not understanding what's going on.
He does.
I found out after the fact, so.
Yes.
In the future.
The other one is on number six that's also corrected.
They're playing with me.
And as for six, do we just need to do a read on that or?
Just to allow them to start working. A notice of commencement or notice to proceed?
The Board of Developmental Disabilities is requesting the board to authorize the President of the Board to execute the notice of commencement, aka to proceed to Millstone Management Group Incorporated for the Metamob Center and Adult Services Building and exterior trim work project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Piddle?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. I'm sure I stayed. We have a meeting at 9:30, so I apologize for having to leave. But thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Bye-bye now.
Is this somebody from the probate court here?
Apparently not. Kimberly Laurie came yesterday and the Commissioner Claypool and Heidi herself explained that they are reconfiguring their reclaim grant and putting some activities in there that have been paid for on the general fund besides the good thing for programming some other probation activities. So this document is just to allow for the commissioners to approve that application for this grant and use the monies as the laid-out grant document.
Any questions?
Feel comfortable with your...
Yeah.
The Probate General Court is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the fiscal year 2016 reclaim grants amendment attachment date, page 230 line funds per TYS application.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle?
Aye. Yeah, there was nothing. This is a longstanding grant. I think there's some funding around inside of it for better management within the courts.
Come on down. How are you doing? Come on down.
Kelly, can you turn that box on there? Is the toggle switch there?
How are you? Thank you.
Now test it.
That's better.
Financials today include an appropriation transfer from the contingency account for prepayment costs for the printing and mailing of tax invoices for the treasurer's office, and appropriation transfers and supplemental appropriations for the Juvenile Court Care and Custody Fund for the state fiscal year 2016 reclaim grant funding. Patrick for Millstone Management Group for the entrance canopy replacement for the Board of DVA Building Services Building in the amount of $46,490. Trevor request for the County Police Court Community Development, the Engineers Office, Department of Jod and Family Services, and the Probate Court. Payments to Kent Mark's Home Improvements for phase one and two of the Towns and Township Community Center Rehabilitation Project for the Office of Community Development, total of $56,578.20. Payments to Portman Electric Incorporated for the installation of heat cables of the Board of DD Transportation Facility in the amount of $36,791. Pay request number three for building technicians for the roof replacement project for the Board of DD Administration and Adult Workshop Buildings in the amount of $130,052. And the payment to Trappy Software Group for the annual software maintenance contract for the Transit Department in the amount of $23,727.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve an executive resolution number 15-133 itemizing the financials for the meeting of September 22nd, 2015.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle?
Morning, Linda.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Well, I just came to say thank you formally to the Commissioner's Office for allowing Destination Geogga, the use of the bell building to appear. We had a fabulous reception there. We gave out so much more information because of our highly visible location, and were able to debut our new passport program. And we just wanted to say formally thank you. It was interesting to see the amount of people that came into the building that asked me if the building was new because they'd never been in it before. But then all lit up at night because we kept the building open until 10:00. They were coming in. They were just in awe of the architecture of the building, so it really gave a nice glow to the building and a fresh perspective to a lot of our people who have not been in the building. So we really appreciate it and hope the partnership can continue.
You're working, thinking, staying in China. You've got a lot of value to the county and...
We went through a ton of literature, not only our visitor guides, but all of our member information, so it really helped a lot of our businesses in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Good.
Great. I know. Pancakes after Saturday. I'm nervous about the rain. Open will come in Friday night, maybe Saturday morning. I just pray please hold off till 2:00 o'clock. And at 1:54, it started raining.
And did it?
Everything done. We flew 80 kids.
Awesome.
Wow.
Served over 300 for pancakes. It was a very cordial...
If you have that kind of power, I need your number for my next... Stay away until after.
They won't even let me pick a day because usually when I pick it, it just pours. So other people pick the day. I just pray we get it. You know, we needed the rain. We absolutely need the rain, and I just kind of pray we just hold it off till 2:00.
Did you guys give any surprise fly-ins or?
Not really. I think everybody was a little bit leery of the weather, and this particular one was not sponsored by the airport itself. It was sponsored by the EAA group.
Okay.
So there was a lot of cool home builds there. We have a tenant who has designed and built his own plane, which is very unique. I don't know if you've seen a breezy or know what a breezy is, but it's along that line, but not quite. And it is quite unique. It's got its airworthy certificate this year, and he's been just tinkering with it, but I think it's a possibility that it's important you might put it out in the paper or something.
And that was on Saturday?
Saturday.
Did anybody hang around till Sunday? I heard this weird noise over overhead. You know, I'm in Hampden, which isn't that far from it, and I heard it almost sounded like an ultralight. And then I looked up there and it was a plane. It looked like a pusher with a canard wing in the front and a big wing in the back. Have some of those over there or?
I didn't have them there, but they could have had one there close by airports on Compo or something.
Yeah, I mean, it was a... I mean, I won't say it's a weird plane. It's just not conventional like most people think of a plane with a small wing out on the nose, and then back was just like a delta wing thing. And then, from what I could see, it appeared that it was a prop pusher. It made a weird...
We had a couple of prop pushers out there, but I can't say that we've got one that sounds like what you're describing.
Okay. It made a weird noise.
Yeah.
Has he made it in the area after the pilot?
Oh, yeah. He got the airworthy, he's flown it. He was only about five hours in when he had to put down in the field. So the EAA group brought it back and did some tinkering with it, and now it's operating really well. Today, we are here for a reimbursement request number seven on our last year's construction project with FAA that we're about to 90% draw on the project. And I think our next reimbursement would be also the closeout report and get that one over with and start the new one. And December 1st, it all starts again on our application, our pre-application, and November 1st of December.
Judd County Airport Authority is requesting the board acknowledge and approve reimbursement for class number seven FAA product 3292054017, 2014, reconstruct apron and taxiway in the amount of $2,860, $2,574 FAA portion, and $286 under global management.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Correa?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye now.
Yeah.
Nice day.
When's the glider season, aren't you?
They usually break down the gliders by the first of November and take the wings off and bring them inside.
You've got to stop it over there. I want to try to get over before the end of the season.
You should. It's been fun. They have a new glider. It's not brand new, but it was somebody else's, and they started leasing it when they had a glider go down, and now they've bought it. It's pretty cool. It's called a Grove.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. My cousin, Linda, she got her pilot's license when she turned 50. Your cousin was a huge help to us Saturday. She is beautiful. She basically runs our Young Eagles program for us and the paperwork end. She comes in, gets everybody signed up and gets them going, and we had a ton of pilots to fly kids, and 80 kids in three hours is what we flew. It's pretty cool.
It's a lot of kids.
Yeah, she did. Carol did great. She did great.
Morning.
Morning.
The first one is... The first two are letters of commitment, which are the initial prior to signing all the legal documents, but they're for two Geogga County companies. One is Chef Electric as they find a home of their own. Right now, they're leasing in Monphil, so this will be corporate headquarters by Mayfield Road Drive. So this will be the purchase of property and construction. That's for two 25, 15 years at three and a half. And the second one is for the Patty Group. This is a new existing company in Russell Township. One of the two businesses in Russell Township. But they've been there for several years. Family business. It's time to transition, so this is to help the transition from father to sons. So they're buying the business, the real estate of it, and with Liberty Bank. So this will be for $193,000, 10 years at three and a half, so. Those are the letters of commitment, 11 and 12.
Questions?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board execute the letter of commitment to Chef Electric Company Incorporated for the CPG revolving loan fund loan. For the purchase of land and construction of a 17,000 square foot building located at 12069 Mayfield Road, Monphil Township in the amount of $225,000 for 15 years, 180 months at 3.5% interest. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the letter of commitment to the Patty Group Incorporated for the CPG revolving loan fund loan. For the purchase of land and buildings located at 15533 Chillicothe, Russell Township in the amount of $193,000 for 10 years, 120 months at 3.5% interest.
I'll make those motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Piddle?
Commissioner Piddle?
So you, you'll have to stay there?
Yep.
The next one, for Great Lakes Outdoor Supply for the revolving loan fund. If this aid requires so many job creations per money month, and this is sort of finding that Great Lakes Outdoor Supply has fulfilled their job creation portion of their revolving loan.
I guess let me just make a couple of questions, comments on that as far as the whole Great Lakes Outdoor Supply. This is, you know, one of the things that I, you know, can give kudos to Anita and Kelly and all of the community development as far as, you know, this was something that I did before I became a commissioner. But, you know, it's, as you see, a lot of these businesses that are coming forward all the time, you know, there's a lot of creation of jobs within the county, and this is a win-win situation because, you know, just like Great Lakes Outdoor Supply pays interest on the dollars there, and it's just smart business. And it makes sense for a business to utilize this because of the... If you were a smart business guy, you're going to approach the county, and if you have the financial, you know, credentials and the background to be able to hold it, their procedures are more strict than most of the banks. So at the end of the day, it's a great way to support your county, and it's a great way to create jobs, and it's just, it's a win all the way. And, you know, and I think that you guys do a great job promoting it to businesses, just like, you know, I didn't know you before. You guys, you know, I was involved in the county and making the approach to grow business in the county, and it's really good, and I thank you.
Yeah. Well, we can be kind of a headache to businesses because we do insist that they build everything they said they were going to do. So we're kind of relentless, but the reward is there, so we're, and we're tired to work on businesses. We really can see the benefit as we move through everything. All right.
It's okay.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Office of Housing and Community Partnerships Ohio Small Cities Community Development Block Rate Program Chad Certification Summary for Great Lakes Outdoor Supply as they have fulfilled the job creation portion of the revolving loan fund loan.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Correa?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Piddle?
Aye. Where are we going to sign this?
The next one is a change order for the Work in American Legion Home Project coming to an end. They've done a great job. The veterans are absolutely thrilled. They're there every day watching them work.
It's a reality show for them.
It is. It is, and the guys working there have really been great to the veterans who just want to sit around and watch and make sure everything, you know, is going well. And I'll get a phone call every day with an update from them, so it's a really rewarding project for me as well. The bathrooms weren't in pretty bad shape, so this change order comes about because just a couple of different things. They had to redo the insulation at hand and not a blown, but like a four-in insulation, little tiny itty-bitty.
Make it light.
Yes, so when they took it out, it just all came out, so we had to replace that, and heater vents were just way too rusted and rotten to paint. So we had money because the bid came in lower than the allowance, so we were able to do a change order and get all new vents instead of just painting over rusted, old, yucky ones. So, but yes, it's been a great project. So this change order is for those two reasons at hand in the amount of $1,875.
And I don't normally, you know, have this much conversation at these meetings, but once again, I mean, on that, I have to give kudos. This was a situation where when we originally had this program come available, this program didn't qualify under the auspice of what their specifics were. And, you know, we basically went forward and supported the vets to be able to get this, and it was relentless as far as what they did to make sure that we got this money to come back into Geogga. And, you know, really, kudos to both of you. They did a great job, and that was, you know, it was pretty amazing to see that change around, so.
Well, Frank McBride did his job too. He stepped up and, you know, like took a lot on.
I enjoy working with them.
Yeah, yeah. And it was. It was just, you know, just the typical, you know, vet syndrome that you don't ask for help, you know? So it was just one of those things where it was kind of neat, you know, that when I called you on that, and all of a sudden, you know, it was like, can't get this through, and something else then finds you out.
It's been great doing that.
Yeah.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number one, increasing the contract with Jet Hook Construction Services Incorporated for the Burton American Legion ADA Innovation under NPFTF 14181. Future changes in scope of work to extend the contract to 49 days, making the final date of completion October 13th, 2015 in the amount of $1,875.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Correa?
Aye.
Okay, and the last one is Great Lakes Growers, and these are the legal documents. We've already been in the letter of commitment, so this is just to secure our position and to allow the loan to be made. This is 250 for 10 years at 4% with the notes of immigration participation agreement and the mortgage, as well as a pledge of human insurance. So this is what an agribusiness. It's an innovative product. It's sort of risky, but that's why we're so secured on it to cover every eventuality. But it certainly is what Geogga is about, is clean food, agriculture, support of the industry.
So on this one, Anita and I have been going back and forth on this. I'm going to ask the board for some input on this. You know, this is a little bit in the area of this is how sausage is made kind of a thing. Generally, these discussions need to be had in this board, okay? We can't make decisions behind closed doors. If there's questions or whatever, we need to have those questions put on the floor in this board. And so I need the board's advice on this because I have a little angst over this particular one, and Anita knows why.
Yes.
We took a tour of the facility. We've been talking ad nauseam about the particulars on this, and here's the issues that I have with this particular loan, and I'm on the fence. I just don't know what the right thing to do is here. This is a very innovative business, as you said.
Yes.
Great group of, a couple of guys that have started this business. The concern that I have is, number one, they're well-heeled guys. These are not your avid struggling entrepreneur. In addition to that, this is a very risky business. This is not nuts and bolts kind of a thing. They're out on the edge a little bit, and we're putting, you know, I've always had a little bit of issue with government being a bank. And I'm trying to get through that and try to, in my own mind, but just if I'm actually talking to banks right now about that, about that concept. But a government being a bank puts people's tax dollars at risk, and so I've always had a bit of an issue with governments risking dollars. I think Solyndra, I think a lot of these, you know, big dollar government programs, you throw money into these things, and you never get any money back. You and I have talked about how Geogga is unique in that we care about getting our money back, where other counties throw money at these businesses and they don't get their money back. We talked about all that. So to the other two board members, help me to get through this in terms of the amount of risk associated with this, the need when we're taking money out of... This is not revolving loan fund dollars 100%. It is some revolving loan dollars, some money that we have in the bank specifically dedicated to this. But we're also taking money out of the general fund, which is monies that we might be needing before the end of the year for other things if we get...
Which in the past years has been $200,000, so this is only $100,000 that's going to come.
So, I mean, I've got some concerns over there, so I'm asking the board. Anita and I have had this conversation back and forth. One day I'm in favor, one day I'm not in favor. So I'm going to throw that out to the board. Help me to this because I'm concerned about this particular loan. You know, we've just approved two others. I had no issue with them. Generally, conceptionally, we pass a lot of these through for businesses and so forth. Big supporter of business in the county. When it's appropriate, when it's right, when we're not putting undue risk on the monies that we're loaning out. And so, you know, I will throw that out to the two of you. Help me with this. What is your take on this?
I'll start off by saying this. I think that, I don't think that you should hold the situation where whether their personal financial situation is whether they can afford to just pay this off or not. Once again, get back to my original statement, it's smart business. So at the end of the day, you know, that's just a good viable candidate for us to have, is being able to be liquid, to be able to do this project on their own. And I think that, you know, they're making a smart move to do this because they don't want to utilize their capital. You have your capital for other projects or other assistance within the company. So as far as that, I feel even more comfortable doing this. Second of all, you know, I think that we, you know, Dave, tell you, we pretty much kind of earmarked a certain amount of those dollars for these projects. And the biggest thing is this, we're creating jobs, you know, and I try to tell people this a lot of times. Jobs are being created to, that bring back revenue into these townships and municipalities and villages and the county. And the biggest thing too is, is that, and a lot of this type of stuff, a traditional bank doesn't maybe want to entertain it just because of the fact that they just have their regulations, which are absolutely out of this world of ridiculousness.
Especially for a greenhouse.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, the corrective is the risk in this because this business is a very risky business.
It is, but we wouldn't do this.
This isn't a Great Lakes outdoor where you, you know, this is a known entity, you know, you can predict the future and so on and so forth.
This would be difficult for somebody who's paycheck to paycheck. We wouldn't do it. You would need to know that they can carry the work and capital load, that they have cash because a business's greatest need is cash as they grow. And it's how they go out of business if they don't have enough cash as they grow. If we can take care of their long-term debt with long-term payments, they can use the cash that they have to cover ongoing working expenses, which is really a big key to a business succeeding as it grows. If it's just sort of static, you know, there's not that much need, but if it's growing, it needs a lot of disposable income, cash on hand that they can put into the growth cycle. the growth cycle, so.
And also the, you know, they're, they're continuing to grow. I mean, their profit and loss balance sheets are showing that they're just continuing to grow. They're, they're, they're receiving a lot of other, you know, accounts and orders that they can't fulfill because of where they're at. And I just think that, you know, they've maximized where they're at right now and they're just continuing to, to, to grow. And I just think that it's kind of a neat concept that I think, if anything, I, I think this is the start of something that probably is going to go even beyond what they're at right now.
Yeah.
Exactly. You know, and it's just, and, you know, and, and, you know, just knowing also the family background on that of, of, of how aggressive the businesses are with taking it from one step to the next, to the next. I really am excited because I think that this will grow into something really good for Geogee.
Yeah.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good move, I really do. And, you know, I, you know, if it was just a fly-by-night, just was kind of rolling the dice on this, I would say, maybe not. But I'm, in this situation, I feel comfortable to put my name on it.
I know both these guys. I've known one his whole life. I know their families. I went on a tour of the place. I also saw a presentation that was done by them. I had a jail breakfast one time a year or so ago. And I was in on this when you first started talking about it across the way, and my concern was the guarantee.
Yes.
Because it is a innovative business. It is, I mean, it's a good thing these guys are young.
Yeah.
Because they worked a heck of a lot of hours. I mean, you know, they, if, if a bug gets in that place, it, it could cause a problem. And they're, they've shown that they're starting to master all the little things that, that could go wrong and, and try to stay ahead of them. I have no problem at all voting to, to, to give them this loan for this, this project. I think it's a, I think it's another, let's say it's a technological first for Geogee County.
Yeah.
I mean, they do this in other parts of the country, but this thing's pretty fascinating. It's a hydroponic vegetable growing operation, for those of you in the audience, where they take a seed and germinate the seed and from the seed till the time they harvest it, and they harvest them live, sell them in containers with the liquid still on the roots. And it's as fresh as you're going to get and it's as
Safe and clean.
Safe and clean as you're going to get because it's not grown in, I don't know, E. coli or whatever. I'm not a farmer, but I mean, it just grows in this water that they put a monitored amount of nutrients into. It's, it's fascinating.
It's a science. This has been, been a, a journey for them as they've learned and perfected.
Because they're cutting edge. They, a lot of this technology, they're developing as, as they go. The racks, the, the troughs that they grow it in, a lot of that is proprietary design for them or by them, made for them.
Yes, yeah.
And it's, it's a pretty fascinating endeavor. I, I, I don't, I don't feel, because of the guarantee, that it's really a risk to us if, you know, God forbid, you know, the bottom falls out or something like that. They're guaranteeing the loan, but this, as Ralph said, allows them to do this expansion and, and leave that money for those unexpected events and contingencies that happen. They have cash on hand.
Yeah.
That's crucial.
So I, I have no problem making a motion on number fifteen once we read it.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the legal binding documents for the local revolving loan fund loan to Great Lakes Growers LLC in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for ten years, one hundred and twenty miles at four percent interest, including mortgage, promissory note of participation agreement, guarantee of Timothy Ryan and guarantee of John Bonner.
So move.
Second?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you put in on these things.
It's, it's, we enjoy it. Obviously, we wouldn't do it, but we really enjoy it. I mean, we, in other communities, they might have more trouble, but there's never been a business we talked to that wasn't like, why are you making us do it? I mean, they're, sometimes they can get a little annoyed if we keep bugging them, but they all are Geogee. I mean, they know what the end is. The end is Geogee. And thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Hello, Anita.
Good morning.
Start solving the fill.
It's getting there.
You got the hood up?
It's, it's almost, it's going up. I think we got about eight or nine thousand, nine ninety-nine, so.
Cool.
And there's one on the way, so. The item that we have on the agenda today is a, approving the final change order on the drainage improvement project for Old State Road. This project actually started last year in two thousand fourteen, was suspended at the wintertime, resumed construction early spring, was finished in May one. We're going back and forth on some numbers, but it comes in under the budget of like, by seven thousand, plus or minus a few dollars.
The County Engineers Office is requesting the board approve and execute change order number one, final decreasing the contract with Neuronis Inc. Incorporated for the drainage improvements of Old State Road CH six, section three, third page in the middle building parking township, including seven thousand one hundred and five dollars and seventy-two cents.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. I'm representing my son Trent Leather.
Oh, we're out of order.
We're out of order. Water Resources has to go for.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Oh, you are.
Good morning.
This is for a two oh eight update in Chester Township. It's to amend the Chester Township two oh eight order quality management plan. It's changing the designation of a parcel that's already included in a steward area. So it's going from no service to existing service. And that parcel is located at eighty-seven sixty-one Maple Grove. They're currently already receiving sewer service from us, so we're just kind of bringing it up to date.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and amend the Chester Township two oh eight water quality management plan to change the designation of permanent parcel eleven open oh six extending to the southern end of parcel number eleven three eight nine three oh four from no service to existing service as requested by the Chester Township trustees.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Down down. Yeah. All right. Got any problems?
There you go. I'm here to thank the commissioners on behalf of my son Trent Leather and also our O equals scout in the leisure. I understand there's been a few substitutions that we have. My son's been in scouts since he's been seven years old. So it's been years for him and seven years or so for the other projects that my son had done, the earthhead fairgrounds. He is also a junior care participant and he's been in it for twelve years. So I'd like to be proud of him.
No, and thanks for coming here too. That's, that's, that's really nice. In three years, we've never had anybody actually present, so that's nice. Appreciate you coming in.
You have a lot to be proud of because your daughter has, has she come down?
Uh, no. And my daughter has, was voted Geogee community fair queen. She had a, so.
Big year.
Debris in four H, yes. Very much so.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution of fifteen dash one thirty-four honoring Trent Colby, whoever for achieving Eagle Scout highest award of advancement, so it comes out. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution of fifteen dash one thirty-five honoring Amy Patrick Reeder for achieving Eagle Scout highest award of advancement, so it comes out.
I'll make both of you's motion. Second?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now, we have a court of honor to open them this Sunday for twenty-seven until four. And unless, um, all of you are able to attend, then please.
His next action is, we do this every year following the budget submission of the tax budget to the county auditor, the budget commission, commission reviews it, and they determine the resources for beginning of twenty sixteen. So this is the final step and this also provides the basis under which you can do the permanent appropriation as we generally do in December of the year. So that's, this is simply a step required so that the county auditor has the certified documents to be able to continue to levy tax levies.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution of fifteen dash one thirty-six accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies on certifying amounts to the county auditor.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner. Commissioner.
Come on down.
Want to get in?
I'm just trying to do. My time of year again.
What's that, deer season?
No tiger.
No tiger.
No tiger.
Year is.
Oh, no, no.
I kind of like the deer season myself.
Is that where you pet the deer and not kill the deer? Right?
Grill them a little bit of soy sauce.
Oh, don't eat them all deer. Please, no, not baby. Okay. All right, so it's that time of year again where we got our healthcare renewal rate from SEPCO. So that's what I'm here to present to you today are the healthcare and dental renewals for twenty sixteen. Not too terrible, but not our best. We experienced our second highest renewal rate since we've been in SEPCO, which was a thirteen point two percent. Our other, our, our highest was back in two thousand and ten. We experienced a fourteen point five percent. The good news is that we are in the consortium. Had we not been in the consortium, we would have seen a twenty-five percent increase. So we have good years, we have bad years, and I think that's the beauty of being in the consortium, both for healthcare and for our workers' comp. I think it looks beautifully for us. So that's the good news. Our running twelve-month loss ratio was a hundred and ten percent, meaning they were paying a lot more than we were paying them. And of, of note is that they paid five hundred and ninety thousand dollars over our pooling point of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's pretty substantial. Our RX, our prescription was extremely high. We had some very high prescriptions that are specialty prescriptions. People use them, but they really impacted our rates this year. So what we're proposing and what you have in front of you, I mean, is what was in the budget did not allow for that entire thirteen percent, thirteen point two percent increase. So we're looking at increasing the employee contribution rates modestly. An eighteen percent increase to the employees, which means that on a family plan, it was ninety-two dollars, it'll be a hundred and nine dollars. These are right in front of you for a single plan, it was thirty-seven, it'll be forty-four. These are not high increases. And according to my calculations, previously you had passed the StayWell Wellness Program. And in that program for next year, the employee would get a hundred and fifty dollars if they complete the program. So by doing that, an employee on a family plan was paying a hundred, one thousand, one hundred and four dollars per year, and now they will pay one thousand, three hundred and eight dollars per year, which is a difference of two hundred and four. So according to my fancy footwork, that only gives them a fifty-six dollar increase. However, if they also include their spouse in that, they get an additional hundred and fifty dollars. So they're still not even realizing an increase for the, the healthcare year. And I would just like to say that in comparison to what other counties charge their employees, this is, again, an extremely modest increase to the employee and the first increase in eleven years. So just kind of want to put that out there. But as far as the county goes, the, the experience that we did receive, these are just, things happen in people's lives, that's why we have insurance. This is, this is how it played out this year for us.
But what we're able to do is maintain the same coverage levels to the employees.
We are not, right.
We're not having to reduce the level of benefits.
We're not changing the plan.
By the employees kicking in a lot, you know, nothing changes, so they have some predictability in their healthcare expenses.
Right. And our dental plan did not increase at all. So we are working with SEPCO. We, you know, we want to try and look at where we could maybe not have as high of an increase for next year. Again, these high-cost claims, sometimes that's just how it is. People get sick and it's just how it is. So that's what we experienced this year. I don't think it's too terrible. I want to also say that we were at initially, let's see, our increase was fifteen point seven five percent, but we got rebates. And so again, being in the pool brought that down to thirteen point two percent. We were at the higher end of the parameters, I think the highest end of the parameters in SEPCO this year, which is very unusual for us. Last year we had a six point nine percent increase, the year before a six point eight, the year before a five point six, negative one percent in twenty twelve. It was a wonderful year, eleven and nine point eight percent. So again, this is the second highest that we've seen.
Kathy, I was in the middle of signing more documents than I thought consisted during part of your presentation. You talked about the StayWell initiative and the cash back, the cash reward, right?
Right, the cash reward. Yeah, it's, it's an incentive.
Yeah, right. And I just wanted to make it clear again that none of the three of us received anything for that. Us supporting that is strictly for the employees and, but none of the elected officials are permitted to take or get involved in that program. We can still do the StayWell, we can still do the points and do the training and so on, we just do not get compensation for any of that.
That's exactly right. And a lot of our elected officials still choose to do the wellness program, so that's always.
Leadership by example.
It is leadership by example, knowing full well that they won't be getting that incentive. And again, the incentive for next year, as you had approved prior to this, is a hundred and fifty dollars if the employee completes it. It's also a little bit higher points that they will have to achieve. We're going to be doing our open enrollment meetings and explaining all of that. Open enrollment will be from October fifth through October twenty-sixth. At that time, employees can come and make any changes they want to make to the plan, put people on the plan, take people off of the plan. This is their opportunity during the year without having a qualifying event. This is when they can come and do this. We're going to be holding meetings on October sixth and seventh at various places in the county. Woody Dillingham will be coming out. And we really want to explain to the employees again, our StayWell program and how much of a benefit it is to them financially, in particular because this year StayWell and SEPCO are allowing the spouse to join in. It is not mandatory to get the wellness rate, but they can if they choose and they get an additional hundred and fifty dollars, which at the end of the year would be three hundred dollars. That's for next year. Our wellness year is different than it used to be. It starts on October first and it runs through September thirtieth of next year so that everybody has that opportunity. It's, um, this year it wasn't without its, its issues, but this was our transitional year and hopefully next year will be better because people will be more accustomed to doing it and be more effective to these moves and changes that I think are more effective. So.
All right. No questions, one comment. A lot of this, you see, a lot of conversation around here and like Anita, we are blessed in this county with some great employees, Kathy being one of them. So Anita and her whole team are fantastic, gentlemen.
the employees, in, in the time that I've been here, have never contributed towards their dental plan, and, and they're, again, this year, we're looking at no contributions from the employee.
For next year, we're going to be hooking ours up to the Italian connection?
Yes. Oh, that's right.
All the meds.
The meds, yeah.
I like that a lot.
I lost my bags, and the airlines lost my bags on the way over to Italy. I just got back to Italy, and, uh, so I didn't have my medication, and I found out that I could just go to a pharmacy and buy them without a prescription, and the rate was enormously, or much different, much lower in Italy than it was here. So we're going to have a connection there, yeah.
And I'm hearing that, you know, prescription rates are just continually rising, you know, and that's part of the issue that's impacting our, our rates as well, just the increase overall in prescription drugs.
Kathy, it's an, it's an interesting market, I think. You do a great job, so, go ahead.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and accept the two thousand and sixteen Giaga County SEPCO dental renewal plans and rates. The county in fully contribution rates can be further approved and authorized the President and Board to execute the SEPCO Giaga County Basic Plan, five-day enhance plan, summary benefits forms to be effective January first of two thousand and sixteen. Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the SEPCO Giaga County Rate Renewal Acceptance for two thousand and sixteen. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and accept the two thousand and sixteen Giaga County SEPCO Delta Dental Renewal Plans and Rates and the County Contribution Rate to be effective January first, two thousand and sixteen. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and accept the two thousand and sixteen Giaga County Fullie Waiver Rates to be effective January first of two thousand and sixteen.
I'll make those motions, second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
She's got one more thing.
Except that I'm going to switch heads now and stay, stay sitting here, so.
Oh, the one twenty-five?
The one twenty-five plan. Um, okay. All right, so the one twenty-five plan, what you have before you is a checklist. Um, we would like to, um, do a, a new one twenty-five plan. We looked at our previous one twenty-five plan and, um, decided that there definitely needed to be some changes. We need to make some amendments in accordance with the Affordable Healthcare Law. And the one twenty-five plan is basically part of the IRS code that allows employees to convert a taxable cash benefit into non-taxable benefits. And under section one twenty-five, they can choose to pay for their qualified benefit premiums pre-tax before any taxes are deducted from the employee's paycheck. So it's, it's a win-win for the employees. Um, we are looking at, at making some changes to it, definitely updating it, and again, um, I think it's extremely necessary that we amend and just do a new one twenty-five because, uh, the previous one was nineteen ninety, so we need to definitely update and, and get, get on, on course with that. So, the cost of it is nominal, it's three hundred and ninety-five dollars.[1478.83]